All right, good evening. This is Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:15 for items posted on the agenda. Governor Pritzker recently extended the disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties to June 29th, 2020. Based on the current public health concerns, I as head of the public body have determined that it is either practical or prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education on June 16th, 2020. I have further determined that it is not feasible for the public to be present at the public body's regular meeting location due to the health concerns related to COVID-19. This board meeting will be remote and comply with the procedures set forth in Public Act 101-640 that was signed by Governor Pritzker on June 12th, 2020. At this time, I will do a roll call so that everyone listening in knows who's on the call. I'm Kira Coforio. Margaret Harrell?
Present.
Karen Stupin?
Present.
Jim Collins? Beth Hostler?
Present.
Courtney Troutman?
Present.
Chris Kazinsky is absent, so we have six board members present. Dr. Moyer?
Here.
Bev Redman?
Here.
RJ, I'm sorry.
It's all right, like bagels and bialys, it's just bialk.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, here, present.
David Smith?
Present.
Chris Walton?
Present.
Nikki Tamru?
Present.
Got Grenz? Mark Cohen?
Present.
Jenna Ernst?
Present.
Marion Lemke?
Here.
All right, did I get everybody?
I do see Scott.
Scott is here.
All right. At this time, we will say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States. At this time, we will do our recognitions. So the first one is to our National Merit Finalists, and we really wish we could see you in person, but we want to make sure to recognize through your achievements. I believe Beth Hostler?
Yes.
Doing the recognition, is that correct?
Yep.
All right.
All right. I have the honor tonight of recognizing nine of our York High School students who have been chosen as finalists for the prestigious National Merit Scholarship Award. Their names are John Devine, Timothy Rattle, Erin Lukowski, Dylan Mahoney, Kyle Rollins, James Sampson, Allison Splitstone, Matthew Splitstone, and Paige Sipski. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation chooses students who excel in reading, writing, and math. It is an unbelievable accomplishment to earn this status and one that I know was earned by these students because of their extremely hard work and dedication. You should all be very proud of yourselves. You have certainly made your families, peers, teachers, and all of us in the District 205 community extremely proud. Congratulations, and we wish you all the best as you move forward in your education. I would like to now read the proclamation. Whereas the mission of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation is to recognize and honor academically talented students in the United States, the NMSE is recognized throughout America as the most prestigious indicator of academic excellence. And whereas of the 1.6 million entrants, some 50,000 with the highest PSAT-NMSQT selection index scores, calculated by doubling the sum of the reading, writing, and language and math test scores, qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. And whereas to be considered for a merit scholarship award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements in advance to the finalist level of the competition, where approximately 90% of the 16,000 semifinalists are expected to attain finalist standing. And more than half of them will win a National Merit Scholarship, earning the Merit Scholar title. And whereas the following York Community High School class of 2020 students have been named as finalists by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, John Devine, Timothy Rattle, Erin Lukowski, Dylan Mahoney, Kyle Rollins, James Sampson, Allison Splitstone, Matthew Splitstone, and Paige Sipski. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, the students, their families, and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students for their outstanding academic accomplishments. Congratulations to all of these students.
All right, thank you. Congrats to all. Okay, next, we have a recognition, Shining Star recipients, and I believe Courtney Troutman is doing those?
I am. The first Shining Star Award is awarded to Jen Lieben, Laurel Strajek, and Maria Regan, teachers at Sandberg, Bryan, and Churchville Middle Schools. These teachers were nominated by Nikki Tamru, Marion Lemke, and David Beatty, district administrators and the Learning and Teaching Department. District Administration began meeting with Jen, Laurel, and Maria early in the summer to think through how to report standard-based progress to parents and students using Power Teacher Pro. Their experience and guidance in these regular meetings has led to a much stronger implementation of standard-based reporting in sixth grade than could have been achieved without them. They designed and led professional development on the August Institute Day last year for sixth-grade teachers to help them reorientate to using Power Teacher Pro for standard-based reporting. They provided district administration with regular feedback about current implementation problems to be able to tackle them collaboratively and in a timely manner for teachers. They have also been invaluable for designing workable solutions for teachers to get the most out of Power Teacher Pro, a standard-based grade communication tool with parents and students. This could not have been implemented without them. The district is proud to recognize these teachers and contribution to our community as shining stars for making a positive impact on the students and staff of the district. The second Shining Star Award is awarded to Angela Stern, a fourth-grade teacher at Conrad Fisher. Mrs. Stern was nominated by Monica and Bob Letrowitz, parents of a fourth-grade student at Conrad Fisher. Recently, Dr. Moyer and Ms. Villa received the following letter. "Our daughter's fourth-grade teacher is Ms. Stern, and she has been wonderful this entire year. She was also wonderful when our other daughter had her for fourth grade. Such is... She is such an encouraging and calm teacher who builds a cohesive community in her classroom. My children feel challenged and successful being a part of her classroom environment at Fisher. We have heard from her through Seesaw about every other day during this time at home because of COVID-19. She has been sending academic and SEL links. She has been sending little videos and even created a flipgrid where the children were able to see each other. When the time comes to recognize teachers, please recognize her." The district is happy and proud to recognize Angie Stern as a shining star for making a positive impact on the students and staff of this district.
Okay, is that all, Courtney?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We have public comments. I believe we have three. So if we were live, we would, we do require that the first and last name be given at the beginning of the public comment. I'm going to begin with the one that has a name. This is from Abigail Chikaron. "I am disturbed and highly disappointed to have yet to see any commitment to change by the district in terms of supporting Black lives and the histories of Black Indigenous people of color in this country. Have there been any conversations about curriculum changes, support groups, new hirings, guest speakers, diversity, equity, and inclusion trainings, bias training, working with the chief equity officer or firm to implement changes to counteract the countless forms of systematic racism in our district, including but not limited to academic detracking, racial segregation, both between and within schools, inequitable distribution of resources in the elementary and middle schools, and policing of students of color?" The next one is from someone who has not, who has chosen not to reveal their name, but I am going to go ahead and read it, even though I will give a high-level summary. "The mission of York High School," this is from a 2014 graduate, but there is no name, "so the mission of York High School, a part of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205, is to provide an education that enables all students to become lifelong learners who respect the diversity of others. As a graduate of District 205 schools, I reread York's mission statement for its students and cannot help but think, seriously, this is a mission statement a school should pride itself on. However, what does York do to ensure all students become lifelong learners who respect the diversity of others? You cannot claim to want your students to respect the diversity of others when you cannot even hire a diverse staff." Sorry, it's hard for me to read. There is a reason Elmhurst is 93% white. It's no coincidence. District 205 in York needs to use their institutional power to do everything they can do to confront racism in its schools. However, you're too afraid, a backlash from white parents to instill an education that empowers all. You would rather ignore the livelihood and social and emotional well-being of your Black Indigenous people of color students than stand up to justice. No hanging posters in the halls celebrating minorities is not enough. During my time at York, I was oblivious to the struggles, and the district is directly responsible for this. I saw educators turn a blind eye to racism perpetuating culture of York at York that tells Black Indigenous people of color students they do not matter. It is evident that the same culture is still alive and well in the district after reading Dr. Moyer's email to District 205 staff referring to the looting and riots in response to the lynching of George Floyd as terrorist activity. Dr. Moyer's quicker to shelter his staff, his white staff from Elmhurst people peaceful protests than to show support and empathy toward his Black Indigenous people of color students. We all deserve to live in a world that is equitable and allows people from all backgrounds to thrive. This change has to start at home. We must bring change to Elmhurst. We must stop ignoring the racism that occurs in our own backyard. We must do better. You must do better." All right, the next one is from Michelle Moscow. "As a mother of a rising junior, I'd like to respectfully ask the Board to create a plan for remote learning that is more robust than what we experienced March through May of this year in the event we need to redirect again this coming year. Our other communities of Elmhurst caliber are successfully executing a full learning strategy. We now know what is needed and absolutely need to be fully prepared next time. There is no reason we can't have high school students engaged and on a full schedule of 7:45 to 3 o'clock each day. Our teachers are being paid. We have technology available or supplemented for those who need it. If some choose not to participate, that is no different than pre-COVID. I was saddened to see how much free time my son had these last, those last two months of school. He did well, but he could have done so much more. In order to fully prepare our students for life after high school, we cannot lose another semester by teaching, of teaching, by not having a plan. Please have a flexible and robust curriculum ready for any pivot we need to make. The business world did it, other communities did it, and we can too. Thank you." And the final one, which also does not have a name other than York alum, but I will go ahead and read it. York needs to acknowledge its role in the systematic racism our country is plagued by today. My four years at York, I did not have a single Black teacher. York failed to provide me with the education, the realities of living as a Black Indigenous person of color in America today. And now a grown adult, having and struggling through these tough conversations for the first time in my life because of the shortcomings of the education provided to me. York needs to make this a priority. I demand to see immediate, tangible, long-term changes that address the racial disparities in our country, community, and at York itself." All right, that's all that I have. All right. So with that, we will move on to reports and presentations. The first one is operational plan, which is Dr. Moyer and Nikki Tamru.
Dave, can I just do a quick tech check? Is my audio working?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so good evening, everybody. In June, at the end of the year, we typically summarize our progress on meeting the work plan that we outline in our operational plan in various areas, and we're doing it a little bit differently tonight. We're going to highlight some areas that we think are either particularly important, need to be updated perhaps from work that we shared with you earlier in the year, or in some cases, priority areas that we think are particularly important, or also maybe leading into some additional work that you'll see when we present the updated operational plan and talk about district goals for the following year. So what we've done is we put those items at the top of this presentation, and those are the ones that we're going to address. And then there are several slides that follow the order of the information in the operational plan that summarize the work that's been done in all of the rest of the areas. Many of those have actually already been presented to you in one form or another at board meetings throughout the year. So if you could go to the next slide. These are our featured topics, and we're going to start with professional learning communities, and that one I'll give you an overview of, and then we'll be turning it over to Scott and Nikki to summarize and share with you some information in the other areas. So you can move on again, RJ. So with the PLC work and that flattering picture of Christine that you see there, I'm not going to let her forget that one. We invested in some support with Cindy Harrison, who has been helping us strengthen our PLCs for several years now, so we have an ongoing relationship with her. The reason we chose this example is we have been, we targeted a lot of support at the elementary grade level this year. That was a conscious decision, but Christine has been involved in a seed grant through the county, which is a federal grant that the DuPage ROE got, and we are participating in in a couple of our schools. Christine has been participating in this grant the longest and has made some really good strides at Jackson, and she chose to use some of her grant money to get even more support from Cindy with her staff. And so we wanted to share that example of the progress that that building's made in PLCs. And a couple, there'll be some teacher testimony. I apologize. There are some spots with the second teacher with Sandy where she's a little garbled, so hopefully we can get through that and we'll get most of what she's trying to share. So the two things before we show that video that I do want to say that we did this year is through our work with our first team, we really focused on supervision of instruction. And what we tried to share is that evaluating teachers is only a part of supervision of instruction, and we really tried to emphasize the importance of supervising PLCs. And out of that and other conversations, we also realized that we needed to deepen our understanding of the standards, that if our teachers had a better understanding of the standards, that we would strengthen our PLCs and then also leverage our work in other areas to try to personalize learning, increase rigor, strengthen our feedback loops, and increase student engagement. And so what we did is we started to analyze data, our KPI data, and we started to learn some things about student performance and how that tracks longitudinally, and we are going to carry this PLC work over into the next year. And so when you see the July presentation on the operational plan, you will see that we are going to very consciously try to build on this work and continue to strengthen the way we supervise our PLCs and the way we take a look at the data that comes from our standard-based instruction. So at this point, RJ, go ahead and go ahead and play the video.
Good evening. I'm Christine Trundle, the principal at Jackson Elementary School, and tonight I'm delighted to share with you a little bit about our professional learning communities at Jackson and the journey that they've taken this past school year. We were afforded the opportunity to work with Cindy Harrison, an outside consultant. Cindy quickly formed strong relationships with our staff and became a trusted member of our team. She was able to observe our professional learning communities and give them feedback that would push their practice forward. Our PLCs with her support were also able to observe each other so that they could learn other strategies that PLCs were having success with. Specifically, Cindy was able to help PLCs focus on the ways in which they look at student work together so that they can talk deeply about how we are instructing each group of students based on their readiness. Cindy also spent time with our teacher leadership team, and her time with them was really spent on looking at tools that they can use and strategies that they can use as teacher leaders to ask deeper questions that would prompt their PLCs to be more reflective in their instruction on students. The district also supported our PLCs through instructional coaching. Our instructional coach had training on student-centered coaching, which helps ensure everything that we do at Jackson School in our PLCs and as individual teachers directly impacts our students. As a principal, I also participated in the federal seed grant. This gave me training on school improvement using cycles at Banqueri and helped us as a school identify feedback as our focus for the 1920 school year. We really focused on how we can give feedback to students that is more frequent and higher leverage to really push their learning forward and help every student achieve next-level learning. The seed grant also provided us with additional funding so that our teachers could spend more time meeting in a leadership team, observing PLCs, and conducting learning walks. Our learning walks are where teams of teachers visit classrooms throughout the school day. They conduct student interviews where they're asking students what challenges you as a learner, what interests you as a learner, and our teacher teams then get together to debrief what they saw, and this helps us make our practice public. Finally, I'm so excited and proud to share that Cindy, myself, and Carla Schmidt, the instructional coach at Jackson School, will be presenting at the Learning Forward Conference in Chicago in December 2020. This is a national conference where we will be able to share the work of our PLCs and how instructional coaching and leadership support have really ignited deeper collaborative structures at Jackson School and the school improvement process and the impact that we've seen on our student achievement data. I'd like to close this evening's presentation with input from our second-grade teacher, Becky Hirsch, and a fourth-grade teacher, Sandy Laskowitz, and I really hope that you enjoyed hearing a little bit about our journey. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Hi, everyone. Today's topic is PLC, Past, Present, and Future. So at Jackson School, second grade, our past PLC focused more on an end product rather than building an infrastructure that would facilitate continuous growth. In a nutshell, we weren't very effective. Presently, however, after having Cindy Harrison observe and give feedback on our PLC, we made some significant changes to how we operate. Now, we bring student work, focus on goals and expectations, assessments, possible interventions for those students who didn't understand it, and acceleration for those that did understand it. Basically, we have a better understanding of how to move all students ahead in their learning. This took a whole lot of trust and a whole lot of ego checking. In the future, we know we're not done, and we know we're not perfect. We have a lot to work on. One of the things that Cindy Harrison suggested for us was to learn how to push each other as colleagues a little bit further so that we step out of our comfort zone and operate better as educators so that we can ultimately benefit students in a forward motion. We need to work on our feedback, feed forward, all of that. So no PLC is perfect, but our PLC has certainly made some great changes, thanks to Cindy Harrison, really. She asked us questions that helped us understand that we were not truly a PLC, but I could confidently say we are now. Thanks for watching.
In fourth grade this year, as a result of working with...
It looks like it's just not going to come through. I was hoping maybe it was my computer or something, and that this system would be a little bit better, but it looks like her part of it's just not going to come through. So I apologize for that. But I do think that you get a good, I do think you get a good idea of the work that's going on in our buildings and a lot of the great work that Christine has done in her three years at Jackson. PLCs are the foundation of everything we do here, and so we need to continue to strengthen them. You can't ever take for granted that they're there, even when you think you are getting close. You always have new teachers, you always have new administrators, and as soon as you take something for granted, people can fall into bad habits and not truly engage the way you need them to. So we will continue to make this a focus point next year, and we will share some of those ideas with you about how we plan to go about doing that when we share our plans for next year. You will see that there are a lot of connections between PLCs and MTSS, and we did not, we, you know, we had a lot of this type of work, as we explained in February, MTSS work going on across the district, but it wasn't necessarily systematized and standardized, and so we're working on improving that systematically, and Scott's going to explain you where we're at with that on the next slide.
Thanks, Dr. Moyer. So as you recall, we talked a bit in February with an update on some of the MTSS Steering Committee work this year, and if you scale back all the way to February of 2019, that's when we had the Special Education Program Analysis Work that took place, and that is sort of the origin spot for our path forward with MTSS. Couple of quick highlights that I want to share out tonight regarding MTSS, and the first involved several board engagement pieces as well as staff, and that's the arrival at grading and academic procedures that are consistent across the district, specifically at the 612 level. One of the most recent items that was put forth for the staff and planning ahead for next year is the use of a common syllabus in grades 912. That was one of the several pieces of our grading and assessment outcomes that came to fruition. I think it will be a learning adjustment for several of our staff to make that shift, but I think it's going to be a huge piece of consistency for both our students and our parents as they go through. as they go through and look at the different common syllabus options. What is included in that is a basic boilerplate that has consistency for the arrived at grading and assessment procedures on the first page. And that it still provides a space for autonomy for our staff. So while not directly related to MTSS per se, it is a great path forward for us in terms of consistency. And that did involve collaboration with Thriving Tool Five, as you recall, from February. One of the other outcomes is specific staff roles that have been articulated at the school level to start to lead the MTSS as we go forward. So this year we had the steering committee that was started in April of actually last year. And some of the outcomes that they came up with were things like a draft handbook as well as an action plan. But really, what needs to happen moving forward is a shift from higher level district input and insight. And now we need to get it to the school level with some of the localized MTSS folks in the schools leading the work. And the way in which we are proposing to do that is to utilize some training from the Illinois MTSS Network. This is an organization that provides different, what they call capacity coaches. And these coaches engage different districts throughout Illinois and have a gradual release approach. So their thinking is that they basically want to be put out of work. In other words, they want to come to your district, work with you and your leadership team as well as the folks doing the work, provide the necessary professional development to help build up skills and MTSS that need to take place. So what that might include is things like proper data analysis procedures and protocols. They might work on team driven models to help make sure that individual students are being looked at on a regular basis. And they might also hit on on pieces of culture related to some of the PLCs, which I think will tie in nicely with that that continued focus next year. We also have a handbook that's been drafted. It's a merging of several different districts. And the committee members looked at some of those different versions and highlighted the pieces that they thought were the most applicable. And what I like about this handbook is that it's very user friendly. So it's not meant to be a document that lives on the shelf. It's meant to be a document that is actually consisting of different pages that folks can go to reference and directly pull to use with the trainers for MTSS work in the schools. Obviously, we'd want to engage the parents and family members with some of the work moving forward. So we are working on figuring out how and when to do that. And we want to make sure that that happens next year so that parents are aware of some of the shifts that might take place as it relates to student supports. The next slide, or do I want to pause potentially for any MTSS questions or thoughts? Or maybe we can come back?
We could, we could probably take questions at the end if if people have them.
Sure.
Make sure we get through, because some of these things will be connections to with with some of these efforts. So with regard to the the next couple of slides, we're going to talk about some of the work that's more related to our our STEM activities and our innovation. So the blended learning, the incubator program, the innovation pilots and some of those types of things. So that's that's the the next several slides, including some data that Mary Ann will provide an overview for you on that as well.
So the York High School Incubator Business Program had a really successful year. And this is really a fun topic to talk about briefly with you tonight. This was the first year, as you'll recall, of the adoption of the incubator EDU program. And within that first year came a couple of speed bumps. We had the teacher Steve Hatterline take the lead as the sole teacher of the program. Steve did a great job designing the curriculum and really working out to make sure that it was, you know, both in line with the incubator programming, but also flexible to meet, you know, our local student and community members' input along the way. Some of the highlights that I noticed just from an education standpoint and visits to the classroom and working with Steve and also Wendy Albert, the department chair, as well as Erin Deluva, the principal, are just key pieces around peer to peer interactions. So seeing seeing the students naturally evaluating one another's work was really easy for them to do based on just the high level of interest that they had in the work. So similar to going to see a movie and then walking out of the movie theater and talking about it because you naturally are inclined to do so, that same degree of conversation with elements of constructive criticism to one another took place almost daily in this classroom. They did a great job with storytelling, which I thought was a really, really neat thing to see from a speaking and listening standpoint. And a lot of our students, you know, in those last moments of their time in high school need to get prepared for things like scholarship interviews or even school choices. And I think it's a really neat thing to see them have to stand up in front of their classmates and to be supported by their classmates in that that process as well. Tons of experimentation in the work. And then the culminating piece are those pitches that they put forward. And no, Dr. Moyer, that's nothing to do with baseball, so don't get too too excited there when you see the word pitches. But that's actually what they refer to as the student's final product for their proposed business model. And we have some really cool, cool related stories from that as well. They had coaching and mentoring taking place throughout this and then days with experts, which were really, really neat to see that I'll talk about more here in a minute with the community engagement. We had 24 regularly scheduled community volunteers this year. We're definitely going to need that same amount for next year. Some of those volunteers served in dual capacities. It was awesome as a relative newcomer to the district to see the community stand up and be a part of this and to act like it really wasn't a big deal. You know, we would thank them, you know, repeatedly and they would sort of shrug it off as, you know, this is sort of what I should be doing as a community member, which was great. There was a board of advisors that was formed. They are similar to the folks from, you know, the the popular television series, The Shark Tank. So they were the ones that did the final evaluation of the pitches. And obviously, being Elmhurst, we had tons of generosity, donations and a lot of praise for the students. The big piece of student learning that I'll talk about with an example here is just positive experiences outside the class. So in watching the students and listening to their commentary to the teacher, Mr. Hatterline, they talked a lot about how much of this work they did outside of the class, which I thought was really neat. And it wasn't because of a homework load, it was because they had the passion for the projects and they wanted to sort of see them through. One good example is on the next slide, if you will, please. And this is from a group that was formed known as the Croy Railway Group. It sounds as professional as they are. If you're like me, I asked, what is Croy? And apparently that is York spelt backwards. These individuals came up with a proposal to pitch an application for phones and mobile devices that would generate a notification to anyone that is waiting on a train crossing intersection. So similar to the underpass within, you know, in our own community, they would, they would basically develop a system. And the data is already apparently generated by railway organizations to to begin with. It just isn't filtered anywhere. So these students realized that, capitalized on that and are thinking this could be a good application for folks that might be in the delivery service or even more importantly, in the emergency services. And they are moving forward to really put that through. So they were the 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 emerging winners of the pitches. And there has been some conversation about next steps with them and even including some potential funding opportunities as well. They are working over the summer with Mr. Headline as sort of the extension piece to the incubator EDU program. So the others were equally as as interesting and and of, you know, pretty high engagement. But that was the frontrunner that emerged to the top from the Croy Railway Group. If we could, the next slide, thank you. Similar, but but different is the blended learning. So talking a bit about outside learning, we have two courses at York this year programmed as blended learning. There was Chicago, Latin Anatomy and Phys. And then we have eight additional courses, not new courses, but just eight eight current courses that will be programmed to also have blended learning formats for next year. This year, we tried to provide professional learning for 103 teachers, not just related to blended, but also related to interdisciplinary units of study. So this was some of the the continuation of the innovation work from the past. We had two schools that had specific structured time for that work. Those were the folks over at Sandberg that you've heard from before with that powerful video earlier in the year, as well as some of the the youngsters at Field. On the next slide, there's a little bit more depth to that that I think Mary Ann is going to help me out with.
Yes. So you may or may not remember that last year around this time, we talked about what were the expected outcomes for these innovation projects. So for the blended courses and interdisciplinary work in particular. For the blended courses, there were a couple of things that we were especially interested in. One was, does it help students manage their time better? Does it result in more a sense of personalization and more individualized support? Do students report that the courses are rigorous and engaging? And last but not least, do the students like the courses? So we actually did some work this year to follow up on those outcomes. And these are some of the survey results from the students. So you can see that the individualized support was a pretty big success. So I think that's great. Students also report that they managed their time better. And when you read the open ended responses from the students, by far, you know, what they say is the best part of the course was the ability to get that more individualized support and also to work at their own pace. So I think from their perspective, they felt like they're successful and they all said that they would recommend a similar course to their friends. So with respect to the interdisciplinary work, some of the outcomes that we were looking for were that students would be growing in those six C skills that we are talking about all the time, communication, collaboration and so on, that students would be excited about the work and interested in the specific interdisciplinary unit that they were working on. And lastly, that it would actually affect their overall perceptions of school so that they would feel more engaged and happy about going to school. And in fact, these are data from Sandberg. And in fact, that is what we see. And I have to say, I was, I was very pleasantly surprised to see this. But before and after, pre and post, so the kids actually do say they look forward to going to school more after having participated in the project. So really interesting and grateful.
Thanks, Mary Ann. One of the other groups that we talked about a minute ago were the younger students at Field. And some of the work that they were working on started trimester two, and that was the plan all along. So they had built up some of their curriculum to make sure that they could roll out their interdisciplinary learning with success. Unfortunately, they definitely had some hindrances with that related to COVID. But they did sue through, and I thought that it was still worth mentioning, given the fact that they made a lot happen despite the challenges they faced. The students in that program were looking at home construction and the concepts related to that. These are students, K5, I think, second graders to be exact. So you can think about, you know, working through the actual dynamics of something as complex as that at a young age as that. The interest level was very high. They did things still, like we said, from remote, like working with building materials from home and writing how to pieces, even going as far as relating and connecting zoning to math, which I thought was really, really awesome. They had a lot of extension opportunities and, you know, really kind of highlighted that interdisciplinary opportunities that were there. The writing piece was huge. Again, you'll see peer to peer opportunities in terms of feedback to one another in that process, which I think is really an example again of the high interest that takes place that Mary Ann went through and with their their positive experiences. They also collaborated with the community and they wanted to be sure that we made a special shout out to the city of Elmhurst for supporting that, specifically Mayor Morley, Morley, sorry. They provided virtual opportunities for the students. And, you know, despite the challenges, worked through it and then really made sure that Elmhurst was a part of the village planning and gave the students a very digestible look into the work of city planning, which I thought was really, really, really cool.
The next slide. I would add, they did something else with the Sandberg, helped the Sandberg kids out. They, they, some of their engineers met with them about some of the projects that the city was doing as it and and shared some of that kind of stuff. But we had other city partners too with the interdisciplinary stuff. It wasn't just the incubator program. Mike Matic had the the Sandberg kids over at his office one day earlier in the year. And so the community has supported a lot of this stuff. I think that that has been very encouraging. I just wanted to reinforce Scott's earlier statements about that. It's been great.
And the the interest continues, you know, just last week I received two emails from new volunteers and one that, you know, responded immediately to being interested and, you know, wanted to talk the next day to get this going. So it's great to see. I don't know if they're hearing it from the students or the buzz is through the community. But whatever it is, we'll take it because we we definitely need the continued support. And it it only makes the learning better for the students. If we could, the next slide. So we talked a little bit about this at last night's committee of the whole, but more specifics related to technology integration, just to sort of help culminate some of the work this year. A lot of this involves the tech committee and some of it is looking ahead to what we're going to continue to do to make sure that we have that integration. We had the D205 U course titled Build Your EdTech Foundation. And that was really trying to have a gateway in the channel for staff to get that access to new tools in their trade. This was developed pre-COVID. This was earlier in the year, early winter. And I think what was nice about this program is we were able to sort of roll some of those resources into the remote e-learning and even going as far as attaching it to the site that was built out for the staff from the learning and teaching department. So there was a good opportunity to to continue that work because it was memorialized in a website as well, which I think is great moving forward. We had the Schenninger Tech Audit in the fall from Eric Schenninger, and we're going to continue to do that in the spring as we talked about last night, and we have some good comparison data to look at in the future. And one item to think about is the course proposal form. We have a structure and a systematic way for new courses to come forth. You typically approve those in the beginning of the year, if you recall, as a board. And we're looking at a way to make sure that there's an element of tech integration in any proposals that come forth and really trying to harvest out what it is that the teacher plans to do or the the team plans to do with tech integration in the course. The digital citizenship, digital citizenship curriculum is coming really, really well, and that's being led by Michelle Thompson and the media specialists. They're looking at some really strong free resources that are available and some already used in the district. But they're building out a strong scope and sequence so that our students are both safe and educated in how they're using technology online and also moving forward into, you know, the workforce. We are talking about the development of a public facing section on the website. This is in accordance to not only an upcoming law that's already been passed, but will take effect called SOPA or SAPA. But it will require us to show and give a visual of the resources that we are providing for staff and students that are digital. But what I think is nice, aside from the compliance and the transparency side of this, is that it really is going to be a one stop shop for staff to access our materials. And we've had feedback before about making things easier in that way. And I think anything we can do to remove any sort of speed bumps in the access to technology will be a great step forward. So that'll be one of those. The K5 Classroom and Interactive Flat Panels, we talked about last night at the Committee of the Whole. The display pilot group was completed. The clever touch emerged as the frontrunner with some timeline work related to that is to be determined. And then we've talked and have done some initial stages of planning with regard to having instructional coaches and specific teachers as well as media specialists involved in supporting some of that tech integration moving forward, ideally with a timeline that will be built out for that work as well. I think that is it for me. I am so glad my audio is working. Thank you all.
I think that's the first time all week.
Yeah. So I was going to keep my audio on in case I have to fend off any more cheap shots, but I decided just to let it go. Nobody is throwing any pitches, if you read the papers like I do.
True. Sorry, sorry. Source spot.
So we're we're transitioning into some, some of the summary of some of the standards based work. But again, this is last in 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 the, this is the final, the final highlight for us. again, this is last in, in, in the, this is the final, the final highlight for us. But it also does pull together some of the conversations about PLC work and, you know, some of the other concepts that, that are related to assessment, feedback, all those other kinds of things that you see reflected in, in a lot of the work that was addressed up until this point. So Nikki will close it out for us.
Thanks, Dr. Morier, and thanks, Scott. Good job. So I think, you know, it would be an understatement if we didn't recognize that standards based learning and reporting was a little bit bumpy this year. So we've learned a lot. We've taken the feedback of the community and the Board of Education, our teachers, our administrators, and really even learning and teaching to, to realize that we sort of needed to take a step back and kind of regroup and make sure that we're getting that, that why behind what we're doing and get common messaging to everyone. So the work that we did this summer, the Learning and Teaching Department is very proud of. We, we identified reporting standards, we unpacked those standards, and we wrote proficiency scales and began to do some assessment writing. I'm not going to have RJ click on that common presentation, but one of the steps that we took to address that common messaging, making sure that teachers, you know, a parent of a student in sixth grade wasn't getting seven different responses from, from teachers about what standards based learning and reporting is and why we're doing it. We pulled all of our teachers together on the same day, and we did a Zoom meeting where we taped it. So if they couldn't be there, the majority of the teachers made themselves available. And our directors did a common presentation of the why behind standards based learning and reporting, how to unpack a standard, how to write a proficiency scale, and like the, the scope of the work. And so we also have that common unpacking standard slide deck that I'll have RJ click on in just a second. But we presented it to our sixth through eighth grade teachers this summer. We will present it to our principals in August at our administrator retreat. And then our principals will present it to all of their teachers in the fall at the first late start day, so that we're all using a consistent slide deck to unpack a standard. Because the feedback that we got from our, our administrators and our teachers throughout the year was that we had, the standard is a very large and hard to understand, very statement, if you will. And so to really unpack it, it, it takes a little bit of work. So RJ, if you could go ahead and click on that. So the Learning and Teaching Department with Michelle Thompson leading this work was, you know, writing the language of what the standard is. And then, you know, what do we want our students to learn? And how will we know that they're learning it? And then if you could scroll down for me, RJ. They take, they take the time to just up a little bit. Thank you. Yeah, right there. So what do we want the students to know? So those are the nouns. And then when we look at the DOK wheel, which I'll, I'll take you to in just a second, what do we want students to know and be able to do? And how are we going to collect evidence to demonstrate student proficiency? So if you could scroll down for me, RJ. Go ahead, down to the DOK wheel. So when we look at the DOK wheel, this is something that we've been using for, gosh, many, many years in, in the district. You know, level one is your, is your kind of Quad A type work. And your level four would be your Quad D type work. So how are we getting students past the memorization and understanding to the analyzing and the collaborating work? So that's, that's just one example of, of a slide deck that we use. So RJ, if you could click off of that. And go back to the slide. Great. And so once they've unpacked, so the first step is to identify what the priority or power standards are. Then how do you unpack that standard? Then what we worked on too, based off the Board of Education's feedback and the community's feedback is, how are we being transparent to students, to teachers, and to parents about what proficiency looks like? So we created these, these sample, or these teacher guides that we will be sharing with. So it's no longer going to be a secret. Before, really only the teacher had access to the, to the teacher guide. Now, students are going to have access to it. Parents will have access to it. So there, there are not going to be any secrets regarding what proficiency looks like. So if you could click on that sixth grade teacher guide, RJ, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. So these are, so if you are a parent of a K5 student, you'll see that these look very similar. We modeled the template after what we've been doing with K5. So the first portion of the teacher guide is letting parents know and being very clear about what proficiency is. So if a student is proficient, keep going down just a little bit, please. I know, they're hard to click through. Yeah, there you go. So if a student, what, what does it mean if a student is succeeding? What does it mean if a student is proficient? Obviously, we all know that proficiency is, proficiency is what we're looking for. If a student is approaching, and then if they're beginning, what does that, what does that mean for, for students? So we really try to, to separate the, the behaviors from the academic performance. And so if you click down a little bit, or if you go down a little bit further, RJ, you'll see that our process standards are, are very similar to what we have at the elementary level. They are a little bit different, but we really want to separate out if a student is turning in homework or not, if they are coming to class on time or not. We want to separate those out. And so those are not, students don't receive a 4-3-2-1 for those. They just, parents are notified and there's consistent messaging about whether they are, they are demonstrating those behaviors on a consistent basis occasionally or seldom. So if they're doing it seldomly, that means that probably is an area of growth for them, but it doesn't negatively impact their grade. If you want to go down just a little bit further, RJ. So that's a, that's a, those are the four process standards that we're reporting on for middle school. Yep, you can keep going. And then the, the standards, so the reporting standards are those power standards or priority standards that, that we described. So a common core, if in English Language Arts, you could have as many as 40 standards that teachers are responsible for teaching. So we have to really narrow the focus to the ones that they're going to report on. It doesn't mean that they're not responsible for the supporting standards, but they have to make sure that they're getting enough pieces of evidence on those reporting standards or those high leverage standards. So we've created a document where sixth grade teachers can look at seventh grade standards, eighth grade teachers can look at seventh grade standards. So there's that vertical and horizontal articulation. So that's the, the purpose of that document. So RJ, if you could click off of that. So I just want to remind you, if you, if you have 45 minutes to kill and you want to go back and look at that common message that our directors presented to all the teachers, that's there and available for you. And one of our, our biggest takeaways this year, just to summarize, is that we need consistent messaging to all of our stakeholders, to our students, to our teachers, to our parents, to our Board of Education. And so that's really what we've been working on this summer, to make sure that we have consistent slide decks that our, our principals are presenting to their teachers with the support of the Learning and Teaching Department, and that we're working to calibrate and peer edit all of those documents so that Michelle Thompson in ELA isn't working in a silo from Dave Beatty, and their documents look very, look different, and they're, they're creating proficiency scales that look different from each other, and it causes confusion for teachers and parents. That's a summary of our standards based learning and reporting work for the summer. And I think that summarizes our presentation. So if the Board of Education has any questions for us.
Yeah, so that's the end, that's, that's the end of the formal presentation. We felt like those were some of the things that we needed to either revisit or highlight for one reason or another for you. So, so that's, that's, that's the end of our, our portion of it.
All right. Well, I'll go first because I have a couple of questions, probably for you, Nikki, just since about standards based. In some of our conversations, you know, we've talked about, you talked about consistent communication. And I guess something that, you know, so I know that for seventh grade, some of the standards has been, standards work has been slowed down. Is that correct?
So we, we unpack, or sorry, we identified their reporting standards and wrote proficiency scales this summer, but we will not, they will be still reporting in a traditional grading system, but focusing on the standards for their teaching.
So when you talk about, you know, consistent, whether it's messaging or communication, do you, does it mean, like, are you looking towards something where, you know, there's going to be a place on the website or somewhere where I could click and say, okay, what is a sixth grader in District 205 expected to know? And, I mean, I've looked on the standards, you know, the, the standards that come from the National Center, and they're very hard to detect. Yeah. So is that what you're talking about, that there will be something, so I could technically go through, starting in kindergarten and go all the way up and go, here's what a kindergartner should know in Language Arts?
Yes. Yes. So we're, we have created a website. It is, there's a skeleton version of it right now, but we do have teacher guides for kindergarten all the way through sixth grade. They've always been behind the scenes though. So what we want to do now is we want to put those on the website so that the parents have access to them as well, so that there's no secrets behind what our reporting standards are and what our proficiency scales look like, so that parents and students know exactly what they need to know and be able to do to demonstrate proficiency on a standard. Those will be live and ready to go in August.
Okay, awesome. And that, to me, builds into especially, you know, clearly, parents have had to be more involved this spring with their child's education. And I think as a parent, it's nice to know what your child is supposed to know, or what you're hoping they
Right. And if we are in, in a hybrid model or not able to be in front of kids on a regular basis, we will have to further narrow those standards. So some of them may be, some of them already are N-A'd at the K5 levels. So for example, with Lucy Conklin's writing, the way that it, the way that it works, you focus on narrative in the fall and then opinion in the, in, in the second trimester, and then another one in the, in the third trimester. So the two that you're not focusing on are N-A'd. We may be N-A-ing more reading and language standards because if we're in a remote and hybrid learn, hybrid environment, we're going to definitely have to narrow those standards and focus on just two or three.
Okay. That answers my question about standards. And then I just wanted to say, thanks, Scott, for, you know, sharing all the great work about the business incubator. You know, I am aware of some of the work that went on in there through kids, and it was really exciting to hear them talk about. So just thanks for that. And also the work with Blended and giving our kids different ways to learn, because I think engaging kids is so important. And so I appreciate the work in that. Thanks. Anybody else? All right.
I just wanted to make one comment, Cara, about the, some of the innovation work that is being done. I agree that I, I really like that we're giving the kids different ways to learn. And I know that having had a couple of them at one point, and going to have another one this year, that eighth grade, sometimes it can be tricky to get students motivated in that third year of middle school to really be excited about what they're doing. And it's just, I really love seeing the, the feedback from the students about how much this has made them look forward to coming to school and interested in the things that they're talking about. So, and I did hear those teachers speak to the program, at least at Sandberg. I didn't get to hear about Field yet, but I'm just excited about that program. So thanks for presenting that and all the work that's being done on these, these programs.
The students really love it. And I think that, you know, speaks for itself. And hopefully, you know, we can continue that momentum and the planning with it. So it's great. Thank you.
Cara, it's Karen. We're doing a lot of exciting things. And I know that this is not necessarily the point where we talk about how well we're doing, all these exciting things and linkages. But it kind of sets the platform because it's the operational plan. And I know that you all do a lot of hard work. And Mary Ann, you do a lot of data crunching. What I think will be helpful is if we can link some of our data points about how we look at how well we're doing, link it to these programs, these, you know, what seems to be really great programs, right? You know, but at the end of the day, we really do have to, to check out. How do we, I mean, besides they're exciting and they're awesome stuff, you know, how do we determine and assess from our standpoint, right, on behalf of the community, is the resource allocation? And, you know, I'm just trying, I'm just planting the seed that we should start drawing some more of those linkages between the two discussions, especially if you look at an operational plan. It's typically, these are the exciting things we're doing. You know, this is how we know that it's successful. And, you know, we have those more hard linkages. I know it's difficult, but I'm going to get back to challenging us because we're going to have to do a better job of communicating that, you know, as people are feeling a lot more stressed in a lot more areas. Boy, mic drop.
Well, I mean, I, 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 I understand that that's important. And I think that through the program analysis process, through the refinement of the school improvement planning process, you know, I, I think we're trying to narrow our ability to not only focus on, on some high leverage things and be able to, to demonstrate progress towards the goals we set in those areas, but also, in addition to just narrowing the focus, be able to have some more real time data that people can make decisions on, which I think we're, we're a little short on. And I think that that's a next step that you'll see when you see this, this plan evolve into how we're trying to take it forward for, for next year and beyond.
That would be welcomed. Thank you. And I mean, it's exciting stuff. But at the end of the day, at some point, you know, people are going to get used to all this exciting stuff, but we might have to, you know, draw more linkages. That's all. It's just might be reality. It cycles that way, right?
So if I could, Cara?
Yeah.
Um, so just two kind of separate touch points I wanted to just mention. First, I love the slide about the blended learning. I mean, it just makes me so happy. And I think that, you know, when you talk about individualized support from a teacher and a, a kid, a high school kid, recognizing that and, and rating it as important, that's a win. I mean, that's an engagement between a teacher and a student that is invaluable and is, you know, we don't always have the benefit or the luxury, teachers don't always have the benefit or luxury to get that in a classroom setting. And, you know, I think we are all, or at least our students are learning about time management in, in remote learning. And, you know, I've got a incoming freshman in summer school this summer, and he's learning about time management, and he's starting to get it. And I think that, you know, the board has, and at least the year we've, that I've been on it, supported additional blending learning opportunities. I'm very excited that there's, I think the number was eight, and somebody, Scott, can correct me if I'm wrong, but additional courses coming this year to the high school. So I think, especially coming off remote learning and what our kids are doing, I think that'll be, you know, a, a popular and successful tool for the kids at York. So kudos to all involved in that program. So I'm switching to my other point. I just, I am, I'm a little concerned because I believe that this board has consistently talked about our store, our support of standard based learning and the standards that every kid gets. I think, you know, my favorite part of it is about the consistency that it offers across grades, schools rather, sorry, and that it doesn't matter what teacher you're getting at, in, in the same school or in different schools, we are different schools, we are teaching those same standards and everybody, um, recognizes what they, they need to do and the, the points they need to meet to reach those standards. And I love Nikki hearing that that's gonna be, um, available on the website for all parents to see. I love that. I remember when I first moved to this community, I looked on like, what does my kid have to know before he can, she can get to kindergarten? You know, like, it's a, it makes parents feel really good knowing what the expectations are. I am, um, and I, I know that you guys know this, that, you know, this board and our community is not there on the standard based reporting. And I just, I'm gonna just not, not poo poo it and not, um, I'm just want to make sure that we are not deflecting your valuable time and energy when we are gonna, we heard, and I'm sure many parents feel that way, that our remote learning, that our blended learning, which could be the reality of our future for our kids for a little while, has got to be more rigorous and robust. And so I just want to remind, um, everybody's goal that, um, it needs to be on that, you know, in my opinion, it needs to be on the, the future potential rigor and robustness of our learning for the new year. Um, and I like the fact that you're trying to figure it out because I think there's a future in it and I get it. Um, but I know you've heard us say that we're not there yet and we do have this bigger priority right now. So I would just, in my opinion, encourage not too much effort to be placed right now in figuring out that piece until we have this bigger, you know, issue, um, under our belts. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Courtney.
Anybody else? Dave, would it be possible, I know, you know, there's gonna, you're gonna talk about the operational plan for next year. Is it possible to build in a, you know, when you come to us with that to discuss a why this is like, what is this, um, like each component of the operational plan? What challenges it solving or meeting or addressing? And then the metrics on how you'll measure?
Well, I, I, I did, um, plan to extend the opportunity for people to, uh, meet with us about that. So, um, you know, I think that that's a good opportunity for people to make sure that they, um, do understand the information that's in there. You know, we had hoped to have a board retreat. That didn't happen. And so most of what you're gonna see is just the essentially, um, an extension of the work with some refinement and some deepening in certain areas and maybe more focus in some and less than other, in others. Uh, but, um, but I, I will definitely try to show the connections and I will definitely try to explain how we're trying to move toward, uh, being able to be more precisely measure the effectiveness of what we're doing.
All right, anybody else? Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Let's, we can move on to, uh, remote learning, student, parent and staff survey results.
Okay, so we gave an e-learning survey in, uh, early on in this process. So I'll just take you back just real briefly. This is the, uh, results of the year end, uh, survey that we did on remote learning. Um, and, uh, we are, I, I just do want to emphasize that we have a, uh, starter school, uh, planning committee and the survey results are being utilized by the instructional slash S E L core committee is split up into five subcommittees, one of which Scott is leading and that is devoted exclusively to strengthening our remote learning, which I'll talk about a little bit later. But obviously, the survey results, um, are going to be, um, uh, scrutinized carefully by his subcommittee. So Mary Ann will summarize those for you now.
Great. RJ, were you gonna pull up the slides or should I? Okay, so, um, as, um, Dr. Meyer mentioned, this is, the first piece here is, um, the results of the student and parent surveys. So we surveyed students in grade six through 12 and also all parents. So parents of students EC 12, um, at the end of the year. If you can scroll ahead. Um, so this is just saying what I already said. Um, so the response rates this time around for parents, um, we had about 28% of parents. That's actually pretty close to what we had early on, um, in April when we did the first round, um, survey. Um, for students, the response rate this time around was only 17% compared to 61% earlier, um, in the remote learning period, which I guess speaks to the, um, as things went on, people got tired of, um, filling out surveys and, and doing other things online. Um, so that's, that's what we got. Um, you'll see that the majority of respondents, um, from the parent side, um, uh, were elementary school parents. You can go ahead. Um, so we asked, um, at the beginning and at the end, um, from the parent perspective and also from the student perspective, how often they were getting feedback, um, from their teachers. And you'll see that it, the frequency, um, went down between, again, that beginning of remote learning, um, to the end of the year. Um, the, the bars, the kind of blue bar there still kind of end up in the same spot, um, in general. Um, the students, um, and the parents, um, you know, report a little bit less frequently. So instead of getting more daily, uh, feedback, they were getting feedback every few days, for instance. Everything kind of shifted over, um, a little bit. So one of the questions that we asked, um, parents, uh, was about the extent to which they were collaborating with their teachers, communicating with them, um, and so on. Um, they reported that their students were, um, collaborating somewhat less, um, towards the end of the year, um, than, uh, in, again, in that first remote learning, um, period. Uh, we asked one question just overall. So how did things go for you, um, as a student? And, you know, parents overall, um, you know, how did you think, uh, think things went in terms of remote learning overall? It was pretty mixed. So sixty, in general, students are more positive than the parents. Um, so, you know, a, a little bit more than half of students thought that it went well, um, or very well. Um, and it's closer to half for parents. We asked them then some more specific questions about some things, um, that happened during e-learning. The patterns are pretty similar. So you see, you know, kind of, um, people agreeing with, um, various statements in the same kind of order. Um, but in general, again, the students are more positive, um, than the parents. Um, so you, one thing, just a couple of things quick on this, on this that I wanted to point out. Um, the kind of technology aspect of it, I think, went really well, um, in terms of people having, in general, having access to devices and internet access and so on, and being able to communicate with teachers. So I think those are really positive things. Those are things we don't have to worry so much about maybe next time around. Um, should there be a next time around? Um, some of the things that, you know, were, people were less positive about were just about the extent to which, um, the assignments really pushed student learning forward, that things were personalized, um, for students and, and what they needed, um, and so on. So I think those are some of the, you know, areas of improvement, um, for potential remote learning in future. Um, we asked students if their assignments at the beginning and the end, were they challenging? Just on a scale of one to six. Um, and you see, they, they go down a tiny bit, not a lot. High school students report their work being more challenging, um, to some extent than middle school students. Um, and, um, you get kind of a similar middle of the road on response from parents. We asked them a slightly different question about, um, did they agree that they had about the right level of difficulty on their assignments? And about 59% agreed, or strongly agreed with that statement. So we had an open-ended item for parents, asking them, if you had to do this again, what is the number one thing that you would want to be different? Um, many people told us many things that they would like to be different, um, not just one. Um, but, uh, we went through all of those and, um, the, the, by far, the sort of strongest, um, uh, response, the most common response that we see is, um, just wanting more live instruction. So they want, um, teachers to be actually doing classroom type of instruction with students. So less just giving of assignments and more, um, live instruction from them. Um, so that sometimes, uh, teachers, I think, pointed students to other videos and things like that. Um, and, and folks really want to see from the teachers themselves, um, their own, you know, their own classroom teachers. There are a couple of other related things that came out pretty frequently about having more of a kind of structured schedule so that, um, it felt a little bit more school-like and also just to manage your time better so you would know when things were happening and they wouldn't pop up at the last minute and so forth. Um, related to the earlier slide, um, something commonly asked for was more individualized meetings. So a Zoom meeting with, you know, 25 kids on it is really difficult to manage. Um, but having smaller group meetings was something that I thought would be more useful and also certainly, um, more manageable along with more tailored work, um, to the extent that that's possible. Um, there are a couple of other things that came up here and there that were not as common around systems and just management of documents and systems, um, and so on. So from students, um, so a lot of students just said they didn't have any suggestions. Things went fine, um, in general. Um, where they had suggestions are pretty similar to things that we had heard early, um, from the earlier survey. Um, when they did have things to say, they were, um, fully to parents asking for more live instruction and more time to actually ask questions of their teachers. Um, students talked a lot about having too much work and especially sometimes what they call busy work types of assignments. Um, another thing that came up was asking, um, to have sort of a set of assignments, not just getting them one-off, um, so that you could plan ahead and really manage your time, um, a little bit better. Um, and just some coordination and consistency among teachers. So I think there was some sense that some teachers were doing a lot and others not as much. And sometimes you would have everything do at the same time and so on. Um, and then again, some, some students, um, talked about wanting more of a kind of regular, um, some sort of more, um, structured schedule. Uh, there was another open-ended item. We were asking for any other comments or feedback and people basically reiterated things that they had already said, um, along with, you know, praising some specific teachers, um, or schools, uh, who they thought had really been helpful. The rest of this document is just the results of the previous survey. I'm not gonna go through those at this time. So those were the parent and student survey results. We also, um, asked staff about remote e-learning as part of the regular staff survey that we do every year. So RJ, if you can go forward. So, um, we had about 62% of staff respond. These are certified staff, um, which is a, a better response rate than, than we've had before. Um, it's pretty, it's pretty good, um, actually. And you can see those numbers by score here. If you can go ahead. So we asked, um, staff some things about, um, the extent to which they felt supported, um, in their work. And we're getting, you know, talking with their administrators and supervisors regularly. Most of them, um, were talking to them at least sometimes. Um, so that's good. Um, we asked them as three more questions about, um, how they felt about various aspects of remote e-learning. Um, they felt pretty positive about, um, understanding what the expectations of them were in terms of providing feedback, um, and grading. Um, they felt pretty good about how they collaborated with their peers, um, understanding where to get some support if they needed it and so on. Um, and if you scroll down, you'll see the things that they were less positive about, um, had to do with making sure that they were able to effectively assess student learning and track progress. I think that goes back to some of those pieces around, well, how do I do this in a remote environment? And what are the systems? And how do I track it? And, and things like that. Um, resources, um, just knowing how to engage students in that kind of environment. A lot of the open-ended feedback was about, what do I do when kids disengage and how do I get them back? And feeling like they needed some support and resources, um, in those, um, situations. And the last piece was, um, just around what is effective remoting, remote learning look like? So what is a district vision for what that ought to? Um, we asked staff, um, thinking ahead. So if we have to do this, you know, again, and students have been in this remote e-learning setting, what kinds of supports, um, do you think you need? Um, a lot of it was around time to think about how they would sort of modify or compact curricula, um, in case students are coming in, um, with some gap, um, or for kids who may be struggling already or start to struggle academically or emotionally. Um, so making sure that we have some pieces in place to address those needs. Um, we asked staff what was their biggest professional learning need, um, related to instruction during e-learning. We didn't get a lot about instruction, but we did get a lot of other suggestions. Um, so including again, this piece around motivating and engaging students, um, communication, uh, and expect, making sure that everyone, uh, the expectations for all involved in remote learning are clear. What is it that we expect of students, of parents, of staff, um, and so on. Some of these other pieces that I've already mentioned around assessing learning and managing student work. Um, and then there was another open-ended item and we got some similar, um, responses, um, again, around sort of accountability and expectations. Uh, and then also around engaging teachers in planning. So I think that, um, speaks to some of the, uh, work of the committees that is going on right now and that have a, a lot of teachers involved in them. Um, so hopefully we're able to take up their, um, input into account in that manner. Um, and then some other pieces around streamlining, um, of tools and, um, things like that. That is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Mary Ann. Uh, questions, anybody? Comments?
So I just have a quick clarification. Um, the April 2020 survey, so that's right from the beginning, right after we went there, that went out to EC five parents and six 12 students. And then the May 2020, so end of school year, went out to the EC five parents and then six 12 students and parents. What, what was the mindset about not getting parent input during that initial April survey period to see if we were on the right track? I'm sorry, there's a nat line in this.
Um, you mean, why weren't six 12 parents surveyed in April? Is that the question?
Yeah. I mean, what was the mindset about why we didn't survey those six 12 parents early on to see from the beginning, um, how they were adapting and their impression of the initial e-learning and then remote learning?
You know, I, I, I think the idea was to get that feedback, um, from the students directly, um, rather than, um, from the parents. But I, I don't know if Scott or, um, Dave.
Sure, I can jump in. Yeah. I mean, I think we, it was so early on. That was the, the Friday, I believe, after the first week and we had talked about the degree to which, um, parents would have been able to give. degree to which parents would have been able to give that hopeful feedback, but it very well could have been a miss, you know, in total transparency. I mean, in hindsight, we're learning a lot in this process and we're definitely not just to validate, but to put into action, taking the current survey feedback as well as the previous feedback from the students, which we had almost 60% respond, putting that into action in the current subcommittee. They are looking at areas of pacing, personalization and planning. And they're annotating the current systematic plan that we use to, to guide the staff to make sure that the feedback is put into action and that we actually get a, get a path forward. But it may have been a miss, just to be totally transparent and, you know, being the first week and having everything taking place, I don't know that we had the foresight as to how far this would extend.
I would say also, oh, sorry. Just to, in the second survey, the end-of-year survey where we actually did have respondents from across the grade levels, I actually did look at the differences, if there were differences, you know, among parent groups. And there really aren't. The patterns are the same, the asks are the same. So I guess there's, there's some good news there.
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that this could have just been an oversight, you know, that the surveys were sent out that week of April 6th to the students in, you know, EC through 12. So I think there was time for parents in, in that one week of e-learning and then a couple of weeks of remote learning to kind of assess where their kids were. So I would just, yeah, and, and Scott, I appreciate your honesty as always. So yeah, I just was curious as to if there was a, an actual conscious choice to not include parents from six to 12 in that initial April survey or not.
It's Karen. Kara, I, I've got a, just a general statement and then question. As I looked at the survey results, I actually saw some feedback that, that supported some directional things that we wanted, which is to bring more technology embedded in instruction. And we have a large workforce to gain the consistency that the community would like to see. And I know that we've been working toward that. So that's kind of, you know, my comment. And, and we got it both from the staff as well as the parents and students, I thought, you know, supporting this direction. And so my question, don't know if it can be answered quickly, but how do we make the adjustments necessary for, I am not going to assume that we won't have to kick in a e-learning, remote learning plan in the fall. And I know that you all are planning for that, which I think is what we need to do. Hopefully, we don't have to execute it, but I think that we have to plan for it. And given the input that we have from everyone, and I was grateful to see the staff feedback and comments that they would, they would like to be engaged in planning for any future remote e-learning and as being part of the tech committee. I know that we wanted to get more groundswell in doing that. So I think that we've got the feedback that can lead us in that direction. And, you know, how, what are the steps and how do we get there so that we have more consistency?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. It's one we definitely have been asking ourselves as, last week, and we meet again tomorrow and Thursday as well. One of the things, and by we, I mean the, the subcommittee, that is related to remote learning, along with the larger committee on instruction and SCL components. But when we start to look, a couple of just clear tangible takeaways to make this feel more action-oriented, one of the big shifts that is inevitably to take place is the structure of the weekly schedule, specifically nine 12, grades nine 12, maybe even grades six 12. And we heard loud and clear, both in the first week survey as well as in the second, the degree to which some version of a alternating AB structure to days will help both on a health and wellness side, but also on an academic focus side. And actually, students have said as well that they feel this might actually replicate a more quote-unquote sort of normal student experience where they're able to sort of focus on that class for the day, that, or those two or three classes before then focusing on a different class the next day versus just sort of waking up and having this just gauntlet of work that, you know, you have a hard time navigating through. So that's one clear definite improvement based on the feedback. We've also vetted that with most of the local school districts, both unit and high school, and, and most are doing something similar in terms of an AB structure, if it is to take place in the fall in any sort of remote fashion. The personalization piece is also definitely an area where we need to improve, whether that be some mix of, you know, a live instruction scenario, which they call synchronous, or some sort of pre-recording, which they call asynchronous. But more of those teacher-student interactions and, you know, if possible, at the right, developmentally appropriate ages, those class-student interactions as well, to help our students feel, you know, a part of the learning and feel like they have an adult they can go to. And the other thing that was been raised, and I think is a good thing, is to talk about the equity and access piece throughout all of this. Not only from, you know, the planning side to help with parents, you know, and making sure that they're not getting multiple emails or making sure that they're having less of a difficult time finding the necessary resources, but just to make sure that they have access. You know, every time I have any sort of a Wi-Fi challenge, I'm reminded that students in our district, you know, struggle with that and even greater amounts. So my small problem for them is a much larger one. So I think us as a committee are really trying to remind ourselves of the necessary depth of the planning that needs to take place around the personalization, the pacing and the planning. I hope that's helpful. I know those are a little tangential, but I think there's some hopeful action pieces in there in response to that, that question.
Yeah, I guess the only piece that I am personally struggling with is how, in a remote learning, how do we assess the consistency?
We, we, in this current round in the spring, we utilize at the six 12 level, a common template for what the lesson plan design would look like for the students. So in terms of the user's experience, which being our students, there was that piece that, that was an attempt to sort of help make that consistent for the students. I think there is much room for us to improve around the pacing of the work, though. You know, students may encounter the same structure when they get that work, but having, you know, some, some depth to the actual pacing so that it's not, you know, all of everything all at once, but that there's actually some, some alternating pieces to the work, I think will help with that consistency as well because it'll allow for a more structured weekly structure for students to get themselves into.
Karen, another way that we, I'm sorry, another way that we addressed the, that is, was through the PLC work of the teachers, making sure that they were talking and providing consistent learning opportunities and assessment opportunities and the way that they were communicating to parents in a grade level and a building to, to ensure consistency. So that's something that we'll certainly be doing next year as well, regardless of what sort of learning environment we're in.
Okay, so, so help me, Nikki, to see if I understood what you said. I mean, from me looking at the survey results, it looks as though we had inconsistency, right? And so we are, we've noted that and we're going to move toward better consistency through the PLCs?
Well, I could speak for the EC5 level and what our teachers did each week was they planned together for what their weekly plan was going to be like in each building. So while we may not have had, or I would recognize that we didn't have consistency across the district because, let's use Eureka for example, a third-grade teacher or team of teachers at Emerson may have been in a slightly different place with Eureka than a third-grade team of teachers at Fisher or Hawthorne. So third-grade teachers or second-grade teachers were planning within a PLC together to talk about, all right, what are our focus standards for ELA? What are our focus standards for math? How are we going to teach those this week? What are our common learning plans for parents and for, for students? So that when they sent those plans home, the, the four teachers at Hawthorne weren't sending four different plans home. I guess that's what I was referring to.
Okay, so, so I guess, two questions, Kara, and then I'm done. And it's around the same concept. So one, have we noted that there was inconsistency? I guess yes or no.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I would say there's always inconsistencies. As consistent as we would like to be among our 13 buildings, you know, there are always going to be inconsistencies that we're, that we're trying to address. So yes, yes, absolutely.
So I, I would say, I'd like to say, number one, the, I, I don't know that, I don't know that, what Nikki just said has some merit, I think, to consider. I don't know that what we're seeing is markedly different than, than what would be experienced if, if teachers were in a traditional setting. I think that the vast majority of our teachers did a good job. I think that some teachers struggled a little bit. I think that we could say that in a traditional setting, we could go across a district and we could say that we're striving for more consistency in our technology integration or in our workshop model implementation or in, you know, our PLC's ability to analyze data. So we're always trying to tighten up those things. And I, and I think that there's a supervision piece, there's a, a management piece, you know, to taking this feedback and trying to figure out where we target our efforts to try to shore some things up. I, I, I think that there were some inconsistencies, but I also think that, I, I don't know that it's markedly different, other than the fact that people were experiencing this for the first time. You know, there were a lot of families that were going through a lot of things, trying to figure things out, on top of teachers trying to figure things out. And I think we just take the information and we try to make sure that we shore up as much as we can for the fall. And, and I, and I'm not, you know, I'm not really sure how much more I could, can say about that.
Well, and that, and that's, you know, that's good. I mean, the point is, is that I'm not, there's not, it's not a blaming. It is, I, and, and you're right, Dave. I mean, that's where I'm coming from. And I think I said it when I first started talking is, this data gives us the information that we need, irregardless of where we are, remote or not, although we do have to plan for that. And, and the light bulb went off for me is to say, we've wanted to do this and now we have the data and now we've got the momentum and we've got people asking for things that I think is what we've wanted them to be asking for or aware that this is the direction we need to go. And I'm hoping that we're linking those things as we are moving the district in the forward momentum to get more consistency and that we begin to look at, how consistent are we in a building or in a grade level or whatever? And those are the sorts of things that we should be looking at, right? That move us there. And so it's not about any individual or whatever, it's moving the district in the direction that we wanted to go since I've been on the board and before, that we've heard from the community and the staff for over nine years. This data substantiates it. That's all I'm trying to say. And I didn't know, we've got a lot of players. I don't know if that message has been communicated. So this is good leverage points to have those conversations, like you said, Dave, in the classroom, definitely outside of the classroom, but this what we wanted to do before COVID, before remote learning. But now we have people saying this is what they want. And so we keep, keep bringing that to the conversation as we are, as we are bringing people into these meetings, you know what I mean? This is why we're doing it, back to what Kara said. Are we linking the, what is this addressing? This is addressing, you've asked for this and therefore we're providing it. And we've got X number in this grade level or X number in this building and we're just moving to a bigger number, percentage of consistency. Does that help understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, I, 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 I think that you want us to take this feedback and leverage our work and improve our practice.
And look at where we are, like, how consistent are we? And it, it's not a good or bad, it's just a point in time. And, okay, so we're going to move the dial to more consistency next year, more con. And then this is to Nikki's point about what she's doing in the PLCs. This is why this is important, this is why we're doing it, this is why we're doing superv, superv, ah, supervising rounds and all those sorts of things is to help, to help equip you, right? Based on what you've asked for. Do you see what I'm saying? So we just keep having that same conversation that we're giving people what they need and we're looking at, okay, we should, we should be able to track that we're getting more consistency across grade levels, buildings, et cetera.
Karen, Margaret?
Yeah, so, again, this is Margaret. And I appreciate the information shared about how we finish the year in remote learning. And what I appreciate about that is how we can take this information and prepare for the upcoming year. And I guess that's what I am more interested in, that's what I'm most interested in. And I think our community is most interested in that, in understanding what the upcoming year may look like. Now, I know, I know that we're going to talk a little bit about that and I know there's not specifics at this point that we can give, but I think these pieces that the community is perhaps more anxious on, if we could just kind of share. Scott went to some of those points about some of the planning committees. If we could talk a little bit, and I know Dave is going to be talking about this later on, but talk a little bit about what those planning committees are, you know, things they're looking at, how they're going to take this information that we got from the end of the remote learning and they're incorporating those learnings into our plan for the upcoming year. So that is, that is where my focus and attention is at this point.
Margaret, I can speak just directly to the, the remote side of that, less to the bigger side of it in terms of the state and the district. But the June 11th Remote Learning Subcommittee met and reviewed this survey feedback in a similar fashion to what we did. And then our takeaway task since that meeting has been to take the survey feedback and directly apply it as a filtering mechanism to the, the 28-page guide that our staff utilized in the work of going remote and that short runway that we had, that mid-March section of time. So they are, they are directly using the community, both student and parent feedback, to improve the process quite literally in a, in a protocol in which they are, they are taking the feedback and then filtering it through to go through and, and actually annotate and add in that feedback in, in sort of a, a more like work-oriented manner. So where does this play out in the daily procedure for a staff member? Then the staff members have been great, the, the folks on the Subcommittee have been very action-oriented, they recognize the opportunity to continuously improve. And we've had some great celebrations along the way, too. But just to help with the tangible side of, you know, where, what is this feedback amounting to, it's definitely driving some of that work of improvement, if helpful.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. And I do think- Okay, thank you very much, Scott. And I do think, um, to highlight, you mentioned some of those topics. Lessons learned such as, uh, going to something more of a, you said A B. Perhaps people are more in line with block scheduling, but something, whatever that looks like, moving more toward that. Um, I thought I also heard you mention more synchronous and/or asynchronous learning, to be sure that the teacher student interaction was there. And then another key point you mentioned about equity and access. Uh, to make sure lessons learned from there, to make sure those are incorporated in any and all planning, um, for this upcoming year. I don't know if there's other specific ones that you've mentioned or that you can share. Uh, but I think that's really what a lot of the anxiety is, um, people are trying to better understand, knowing that we can't give perfect information, but trying to better understand what this upcoming year may look like.
The, the only one I would add is just, um, the importance of what we were calling user-friendly effective resources for engagement. So we don't want parents to be, uh, inconvenienced by, you know, this process, you know, regardless of what it looks like in the fall. We recognize the challenges that, 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 you know, brings regardless of how much of the time is spent in remote. So we want to just make sure that, you know, students are able to effectively navigate it to the extent possible, regardless of their age. And that, that obviously looks different, right? Based on our students and their age, but our hope is to, you know, really just improve in that area as well. So we're calling that user-friendly effective resources for engagement.
Thank you.
I just want to, just to comment, um, one thing I've noticed is that consistency is something that in a lot of our surveys we've taken, um, across the district for different reasons, that is something that's come up here and there. And I have noticed that a lot of the things that you guys have been working on are leading us to being more consistent in, in many areas. So, um, like the homework document that, um, Scott and your team worked on last year and the, um, handbook, um, you talked about the Common Syllabus, um, plan for the future and the PLCs and some of the technology work that the teachers are going to be doing. I feel like a lot of the things that are, that are being worked on and Nikki, the standards, you know, getting that laid out so that parents really know what the expectations are and students know what the expectations are. I feel like all of these things tie in together and hopefully that will help in all the work that you're doing in the remote, um, or in classroom work. So I, it's just nice to see all of those things going on and, um, it seems like they'll lead us in the direction of having more consistency. And thank you for all the information tonight from everyone.
So I just wanted to emphasize, you know, in this last, um, slide talks about, uh, you know, set clear expectations. And this was, uh, I think the staff feedback. One of their things was set clear expectations for students and parents. And Beth kind of mentioned a little bit of this. But I think, you know, in the spring, obviously this was an unexpected situation and 10,000 students and, you know, employees had to move operations, you know, home and you know, we all had to deal with it in our own, with our own personal situations. But in the fall, we have the opportunity to learn and, you know, from, or use what was learned. And I guess the thing that I, um, would just like to emphasize is I think having clear expectations for everyone is really important. You know, as a parent, what do you expect me to do? Are you expecting me to be with my child one-on-one? I mean, that may be the case or, you know, depending on the age. Um, so, you know, what is the expectation for parent? Um, what's the, you know, what's the expectation that the teacher, you know, what will that look like? How will they be structuring the day or the class, depending on the level? And then what is the expectation for the student? And I think, um, it would really help a lot of the anxiety, you know, that Margaret even alluded to. If those expectations are laid out upfront. Because, you know, it looks, you know, everybody's children are different and home situations are different, but we still want to have the expectation that students are learning every day. And, you know, how is that, um, going to be achieved? So that is just the one thing, you know, I see on the feedback that I hope will really be emphasized upfront. And that helps everyone, I think, wrap their head around what this looks like, whether it ends up being, you know, off and on or, or a period of time, or I don't know. So that's my, but thank you for all the, um, just reflection, I guess. I think that, you know, healthy work means you realistically look at what was good and what needs improvement and you adjust and move forward. Anybody else? All right. Then thank you for that presentation and we will move on then to approval of board meeting minutes. Uh, we have approval of May 26, 2020 minutes. Were there any changes? All right, then those minutes stand as presented. Um, approval of May 26, 2020 closed session minutes, uh, those stand as presented. Right, we move on to superintendent's agenda, consent agenda. Did any board member want to pull an item off of the consent agenda? Okay, here, hearing none, then I would ask for a motion for the consent agenda.
Kara, I will make a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, which includes items A through M.
I'll second.
Do we need to read, um?
Do you need me to read all the items?
If you go to the bottom, I can't get to my. Go to the bottom, I think it summarizes like high level.
Sure. Um, okay, so the Board of Education approves the consent agenda, which includes item A, personnel report. Item B, financial reports. Item C, approval to authorize destruction of verbatim recordings of closed session minutes. Item D, approval to open designated closed session minutes and keep all other closed session minutes closed. Item E, approval of consulting contract. Item F, approval of policy reference educational subscription service, press. Policy manual update, section two, Board of Education. This is the first reading. Item G, approval of press policy manual update, section four, operational services, first reading. Item H, approval of pol, of press policy manual update, section five, personnel, first reading. Item I, approval of pol, press policy manual update, section six, instruction, first reading. Item J, approval of press my, policy manual update, section seven, students, first reading. Item K, press policy manual update, section eight, community, community relations, first reading. Item L, approval of new policy number 790, released during school hours, first reading. Item M, approval of wireless network equipment donation.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Courtney, second by Beth. Uh, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes. Six eyes, no names, one absent, the motion passes. Right, item A, under superintendent's agenda, action items is approval of separation agreement and general release. I will go ahead and make the motion for that. Uh, make a motion that the Board of Education approve the separation agreement and general release as presented.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, uh, seconded by Beth. And any questions or discussion? Okay, you may call the vote, Jenna.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Okay, six eyes, no names, one absent, the motion passes. Okay, item B, approval of staff salaries for 2020, 2021 non-union. Uh, this was an item previously on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and ask for a motion.
Kara, I can make a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 salaries for all non-union employees as presented.
This is Margaret, I second.
Are there any questions or discussion? I know we, uh, it was on our agenda last night as well as a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I, I, Kara, I just wanted to say one thing about this and, uh, next item, item C, these were both deferred from previous meeting. Uh, and last night was simply an exercise in making sure that we had money in the checkbook before we committed to, uh, spending the money on these two items. And, uh, we reviewed the tax collections, the property tax collections, uh, for the first installment, uh, which was due on June 1st. And, um, it was actually stronger than last year. So, um, yeah, I think we can continue with these two items.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions or comments? All right, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes. Six eyes, no names, one absent, the motion passes. Item C, authorization of purchase of instructional technology. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Um, I moved that the Board of Education, um, approved the purchase and allocation of funds in an amount not to exceed $418,000 for the following. 70 of the 75-inch Clever Touch Impact Plus Interactive Flat Panel displays. 70 of the Copernicus Adjustable Mobile Cards. 220 Apple iPads cases and JAMF licenses. Approximately $60,000 for the purchase of display technology, wall mounts and supplies to continue the 612 display pilot.
I'll second.
Okay, we talked very extensively last night about this, but are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment in case people didn't time, or listen last night, that those 220 Apple iPads are, you know, dedicated towards those kindergarten kids and, um, and they're possible not just in classroom learning, but remote learning. Um, and it puts us at a one-to-one ratio for those kindergarten kids if we find ourselves in that same position. So I just want the community to know that this is a, a real commitment by our technology, a continued commitment by our technology committee and department to make sure that remote learning and learning in the classroom is extensive for all of our students. So I want to thank everybody in the committee and, and all the work that's gone into this stuff.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a comment as well. I actually want to say thank you to our administration for coming to the board last night with five different options on this and allowing the board to have a discussion and reach consensus on the option of the, the one option of those five that made most sense to us.
Thanks, Jim, I agree. Anybody else?
Okay. Um, but Kara, it's Karen. And for, uh, community members that, uh, don't go back to last night's conversation. It's real, it is tied to, it, this solution or this forward momentum, um, helps with both parent, student and staff feedback that we got in remote learning. And it's not just the technology, it's the capabilities that we'll have in the classroom for, um, enhanced and embedded, um, learning and teaching. And that it includes professional development and it, it's just a bigger functionality than looking at it as just technology. And I think that's important to know. And if people want more, I mean, we had a healthy, really robust discussion that was led, um, with a why we're doing this and how it helps instruction and our education.
Thanks. All right, anybody else? Okay, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes. Six eyes, no names, one absent, motion passes. All right, uh, next item is superintendent's communication, uh, 2020, 2021 Start of School Planning Committee. Dave?
All right, so, um, we established a, uh, planning committee and we used the district management group framework that they presented to us to just kind of uh, do some initial organizing. Uh, but we've also, I've been on several meetings a week with superintendents and other groups. Uh, many of our other, uh, people have been involved in a lot of those kinds of discussions as well. So we keep learning as we go along here and as things evolve. We have, uh, four committees that, um, are the Instructional Core SEL, Operations, Stakeholder Communications and Resources. Those are the four. Um, those are being coordinated by a steering committee. And, um, we, in all, we have 78 different, uh, people representing all, all segments of our, um, uh, community from the, the teachers, uh, to the, uh, parents, administrators. Uh, there are board members on it, um, other community members, uh, employees, uh, that serve various functions across the district as well, uh, representatives from formal labor, uh, organizations. So we're trying to tackle a lot of the different things that, that we need to in order to plan successfully for the start of the school year. Um, it's been a little bit difficult, uh, to do, uh, in absence of information from the state. Uh, we have no formal guidance from the state at this point. Uh, we, I had expected some on Thursday, then I, I heard some rumors from the ROE that we might get some today. We did not get any today. Uh, but in some ways that's maybe not as big a deal as we think it might be, just because in the past, the, the previous direction from the state has been so vague and, and then on top of its, uh, ambiguity has, uh, changed. After they issue a statement, a week later it changes. And so it hasn't really been that helpful. So that is why I shared with you in your packet, an example from Jefferson County, Colorado, uh, and, and the state of Maryland. Because that will give you an idea of the types of things that we're trying to, uh, work on. These are, this is a high-level planning guide, uh, resource manual type of, uh, a document. It's not the, the roll up your sleeves day-to-day type of work that has to do to implement, that, that we will have to do to implement these things. We need to create this framework and then there will still be a significant amount of work between now and the start of the school year work between now and the start of the school year that'll be required to actually, uh, pull these things off. And so, uh, probably, um, we already kind of have decided as a, as a steering committee, uh, that we want to model our plan after the Jefferson County, Colorado Plan. So we're just going to follow that template, uh, basically. I mean, there will be some tweaks that maybe are, are individual to us, but, um, that will give us the sort of the, uh, roadmap and then we will, um, have that work completed. Uh, we expect to, we hope that nothing, uh, gets us derailed. Where we have that work completed at the end of the month, uh, would like to share it with you, uh, when we talk about the operational plan, but share it with you prior to the, uh, communication going out to the public. We're hoping to get that communication out to the public sometime early in July, if possible, even maybe even that first week of July. Uh, because people are curious, they do need to, um, have, uh, take into account their personal considerations and their personal situation, they need information, and we obviously need the time to, uh, plan effectively. So, um, the, uh, um, the steering committee meets on Wednesday, so our next meeting is tomorrow. And, uh, from talking to the various committee chairs, I think we're, we're getting a little bit closer every day. Those committees are meeting, uh, very, very regularly, um, you know, multiple times a week. And so, uh, each week we get a little bit closer and I, I feel as if, in, in my mind, I think that the, this tomorrow's meeting will be something where, uh, we start to see some of this, uh, uh, work of the individual committee start to come together a little more holistically. So that's, that's where we're at with that planning process and I just, uh, wanted to share that with you.
Questions, comments?
I will, I'll just say a quick comment that I have mentioned before. I think it's, um, incredibly, not just the work of the committee is vital and I applaud all of the 70-plus people that have stepped up for these committees, but like you mentioned, Dave, it's incredibly vital, um, to get the community what the plan is, um, as soon as we can. And I understand all the constraints that are involved in that, but, um, every single family, no matter what their situation is or scenario is, needs to make plans. And I truly appreciate the committee and your understanding of that and how hard you're working to get it out to the community as soon as possible.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. Courtney, I really do, because, uh, a lot of these people are working very hard and they have to make some very significant decisions and they're doing it, um, without a lot of definitive information. Um, there's a lot, a lot of this work is stuff that, that people are encountering for the first time, there's no manual. Um, and, and, you know, it, it is, is very stressful for our families and I recognize that. Um, and, and we all acknowledge that and we want to come up with a quality plan. We want a plan that is agile, knowing that we will need to pivot quickly at certain points throughout the year, potentially, depending on, on how the things, uh, unfold. And none of us has a crystal ball to know exactly what that means. So, um, we, we will keep you updated regularly. Um, and, uh, and, and we will, um, do everything absolutely possible to have this done by the end of the month, which was our, our original, um, target date.
I just have a quick question. I know, you know, you've said, you know, to get a plan out, you know, at the beginning of the month, like, prepared, but is there any plan, and this is probably really for Bev, she probably knows where I'm going to go. Um, communicate with the community. Um, you know, I know the last day of school message, you know, indicated to expect a plan initially July 6th, but I feel like we're starting to see people get anxious because they're not hearing anything. And I just wondered, you know, even if there's that, it's almost like, you know, we're doing things or something, just so people know they're feeling like they're in touch and they're connected and we understand that, um, you know, it, this is, they want to know.
Mm-hmm. Fair enough.
Do you speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
If you have.
Speaking to that, absolutely. Uh, to that end, I will say that in our last steering committee, we certainly understood the fierce urgency of now and we certainly put out, uh, two surveys, one to the staff, one to our families. And in that messaging, we certainly gave them a little bit of an outline on what they could expect from that. I will just say just rough number on the parent's side. It's over 5,000 in terms of responses at this point. We expect to close it tomorrow at 5:00 so that we can start analyzing. I know, wow, right? So while we are analyzing that. So that tells you the level of engagement. What we want from parents at this point is really a first blush of what they're feeling, knowing, even reacting to what we would call nebulous information at this point. How are they feeling? What kinds of decisions would they make? And that can help us narrow down some of the information that we need to get to and hopefully will help us when we get information from the state to plow through that a little bit faster because we have some ideas of what the community wants to hear and what they want to see in terms of info. As soon as we get another kernel of information, we will turn those results back around to the community so that they can see that and also, uh, given a regular update on where we are. The, I do have another communication sitting in my locker as we speak, that as soon as we get a few more pieces of information, we can certainly turn that around. Hopefully, I would like to do something this week and keep that regular weekly communication going with the parents all the way up until it's time for us to get back into school. I know that was very successful for us when we left, when we left actually being in front of students and in front of teachers on March 16th, that regular weekly communication. I know that, uh, we'd all like to take a breath, but I don't know that we can really afford to take that much of a breath and leave that much of a window in terms of regular communication. So I'd like to see that regular weekly communication continue, just so that we don't amass so many questions and, uh, amass so much of a void between the times that we speak.
Thanks, Bev. And if you said this, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be able to share those results? Like, will people be able to look at those? Because I think a piece, I'm guessing they're very wide-ranging and, you know, people's, I mean, I don't know, but guessing, you know, people have different values and what, and I just think it's important for the community to see that there's probably not going to be one solution that meets everyone's challenges.
Right. Uh, the goal is to turn that information around as quickly as we possibly can and get that back out to the community so that they can see those responses. I know that as soon as we close it, I, I know I've been peeking back and forth, kind of like Christmas, at the results as they've been coming in. I'm sure Mary Ann has as well. Uh, we'll be right on it as soon as that survey closes so that we can not only keep you informed, but also make sure that parents have that feedback also.
I, I do want to say that parents have been asked to respond for each child.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that 5,000 number in, includes the fact that there are some people that have given multiple responses.
Thank you for the commitment to weekly.
Fantastic number.
It's almost 5,300 as of now.
Wow.
I told you, we've been peeking.
Thanks for that, you know, Karen, I think said this and just, um, but thanks for all the regular communication, because I think that has been a, um, a link that has been so positive during all this, that people could count on a regular communication and they knew where to go for the answers as much as possible. So thanks.
Yep, I think we just have to stick with the lessons that we've learned and what we know works for D205 and keep that regular communication coming.
Right. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Well, uh, then the next item on the agenda is Freedom of Information Act requests.
Uh, there were three. Uh, one requesting specific emails, which was denied, one requesting specific records, which was granted, one requesting specific invoices, which was granted.
Okay. All right, um, board communications, uh, board members will present reports or share information with the full board. Um, anybody have anything? Um, Margaret?
Yes, thank you. I, uh, care, so, um, during these days of high stress, it's important for us to go back to our basic manners as a way to remember, uh, the basis of our humanity. So today, we get to say goodbye and thank you to some of our key contributors. When we have good people in our organization, we want them to stay forever. And yet, we have to recognize that people need to continue to grow and experience growth, which often means new and different experiences. Tonight, we're recognizing some of those from our District 205 family who have chosen to experience new horizons. And I'm going to speak specifically to, um, some of the people from York High School. We want to recognize and applaud, um, Erin DeLuga, Principal, Ryan Dougherty, Assistant Principal, Melissa Moore, Assistant Principal, and Matt Collins, Special Ed Director, who have chosen, um, to leave our community and to go on and explore new and different horizons. Thank you and wishing you well.
Great, thanks.
I just wanted to say something about, uh, Dr. Mark Cohen, if I could. Dr. Cohen will forever have a place in District 205 history. He's our first Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Growth. Uh, during his tenure as Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Growth, he worked with York High School to launch their manufacturing lab and partner with local businesses. Uh, he worked with York High School to launch the Business Incubator Program, uh, which just finished its first year, as we heard about, uh, tonight. Uh, and, uh, even began blended learning. From there, he went on to be our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, uh, where he did, uh, again, an excellent job. And now he moves on, uh, to be Superintendent of the Mokena School District. And, um, I, we're going to miss him a lot, but that's, when people leave, that's what I like to see, is that they're moving up, uh, and they're becoming superintendents in other school districts. He is, uh, it's a well-deserved opportunity for him. Uh, it's super close to his home. Mark, we're going to miss you. We hope you come back. And thank you so much for the contributions you've made to our school district.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, to be able to work in District 205 has been an absolute blessing. Uh, the, the school board, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity. Uh, to my administrative colleagues, I've learned something every day from you. And to the teachers and staff who I've worked with along the way, um, the folks on the, who get it done every day, um, it's been an absolute honor to serve with you and thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
Come back and visit us.
This is Courtney Troutman and I would just like to say, it's, it's always challenging when a need arises to fill a vital position in any organization, but when you're under a time crunch to do so, the kind of pressure is even greater. So last year, when our district found ourselves in the position that we needed to fill and locate, um, an Assistant Director, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Special Education, just imagine how fortunate we all felt when we learned that Dr. Volpe had just quote-unquote retired after a long and distinguished career serving so many children in our community and so many communities around us. And what I've quickly learned is that, that's the thing about us retired people, we are really bad at it. And, um, Dr. Volpe is a perfect example of that. He came to us last summer and immediately led us in our district with compassion and amazing insight into our communities and our district. He immediately immersed himself and his vision into every part of student life here at District 205. And we truly believe that we are in a better place right now because of that. There are no words that could adequately reflect how thankful we are about that extra year of your workforce that you gave to the District 205 students. And we thank you, um, 10 times over. And now, please, for the love of everything that you deserve, really retire with our gratitude and thanks. We will miss you desperately.
This is Beth and, um, David Smith, who has, um, been our Head of Technology for 13 years in District 205, is retiring. And it's weird that he's not on here, because I kind of thought he would be, but, um, I'm so used to seeing him on here every time. I just wanted to say a few things today. First of all, big thank you to him for leading District 205 in all of the technological advancements that have been made here over the past 13 years. Um, I know that he has also worked very hard to make sure that our district is set up for success in the coming years so that we can continue to grow and develop our technology as we move forward. And has worked hard to make RJ's transition hopefully as smooth as possible, even during this challenging time. I have always appreciated, as a board member, a PTA representative, and a parent, Dave's willingness to answer any questions and explain projects to us in a way that even those of us that are not so technologically savvy can understand. So I have always appreciated that and Dave might want to stay by the phone because I might still be calling him, asking him questions. Uh, finally, um, I wanted to also say thank you to Dave for all that he did to, for our students, staff, and families to help and support us through the unexpected impacts of COVID-19. It's, um, there were many challenges and, uh, he was there to answer all the questions that we had. So that was much appreciated and we just really appreciate everything he's done here in District 205 and hope him all the best in his retirement. Congratulations.
I'm actually.
You're here!
I, I, I just want to say very quickly, first of all, thank you very much. Um, it's been truly an honor and a pleasure to, to work in the district and to support the community. Um, I live in Elmhurst and my children have gone through the district. My daughter's a graduating senior. It's been just amazing for me personally and professionally to be here. And I'd also like to thank the board and the community because honestly, all, all the great strides that have been made, uh, really couldn't have been accomplished without the support of the board and the community. Elmhurst has an amazing, um, uh, recognition of the importance of technology and invested in that my entire time here, which, uh, doesn't exactly get all the work done, but it certainly makes it easier when you have the support, the financial support and, and just basically the, the general support of the community. So I want to thank everybody and it's been a great ride and I think, uh, the Technology Department and Instructional Technology in general are in good hands going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Congratulations on your retirement.
And last, but definitely not least, we are recognizing our very own Ellen, who has been the face and often the voice of District 205, from new board members all the way down to the new parent coming in for kindergarten. Um, Ellen has also been the glue that keeps us going in so many ways. She's got such institutional knowledge that has helped in so many levels. It's interesting that Ellen
It's interesting that Ellen has served the district for 25 years. Little did I know until recently that she started at Field School as an assistant librarian and she's got a funny story about a student on her first day. You'll have to ask her about it. Then she became the office assistant at Field and, and had served three different principals. Then she was persuaded, which took a long time, to become an assistant in the district office for superintendent. And there then she served for 13 years and three superintendents ago. Ellen wears many hats and she's able to juggle those hats within milliseconds. She also is the right-hand person of the board. She, again, has the institutional knowledge, which comes in handy whenever you have a question. All board members have always said that it's very helpful to gain her knowledge and it's always at the ready. She's been our FOIA officer and she's been a key person for our residency coordination with our finance office and also most recently with all-day kindergarten registration. Last but not least, serving the superintendent and the board members. She's a pleasure to work with. Many comments came in about that, both from being the voice and face to our community and parents, sometimes the first exposure to the district, but also with the people in the district office and board members. So Ellen, we wish you well when you finally retire. Many of us have a hard time retiring. And thank you for staying with us for all these years. Thank you for being willing to come back and help us as we start the new year with the all-day kindergarten. And you will be missed and we thank you for helping Kathy get acclimated to District 205 as she comes on board. And I want to say thank you, Ellen, and welcome aboard Kathy.
And then I just want to say a special thank you to Dr. Moyer, the cabinet, and principals. This is usually the time of year when we are wrapping up one year and there's a little bit of a rest or a break for everyone and then we start with new energy on a new year. And the board's well aware that you aren't probably going to get much of a rest this summer as we prepare for the 2020, start of 2020 school year. But I just want to say thank you to all of you for doing a job this spring that was unexpected. It's been, you know, it's been, I know that you're tired, you haven't been able to rest and it just keeps going. So thank you for all you're doing for kids, for supporting the district, supporting teachers, and helping, you know, the community through this, because the schools, we've learned, are really the heart of the community. So I just want to say thank you for all the work and we hope somewhere this summer you can get a little rest, but know that we appreciate and notice all that you guys have all done. So with that, I will read the upcoming meetings, which are Tuesday, July 8, 2020, special closed session, Board of Education meeting at 6:00, and Tuesday, July 14, 2020, Board of Education meeting at 7:00. If there is nothing else, we are adjourned.